Our which ascends our nation and God and physical liberty and justice for all.
We're going to deviate from our normal procedure just a little bit. We have a FOB presentation and the gentleman's ready to go, so we're going to suspend visitor comments until after the FOB presentation and then we'll open it up because they're sitting here waiting. So Randy, if you want to bring him online?
He's on. All right. Thank you guys. I appreciate the time that you've given us today. And Randy, I'm actually going to mute inside this so that I don't get back on my line. There we go. I think that should be good. All right. And as was mentioned, there is many questions at the end of the presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer them, but since we do have a time limit, I'm actually going to start my talk here, so it can keep me honest to the 15 minutes. So the presentation that we're giving today is for Gallagher Integrated Security Solutions. That is a product that we have proposed for the Keep-Op solution that is being presented to the board. A little bit about Gallagher as a whole. There we go. So some strengths. It's a New Zealand-based company, but it's what's considered a secure export partner. So unlike some of the other products that are imported into America, this does not have to go through some of the customs. So as coronavirus has hit over the last few months, Gallagher has been one of the only products we have that has not had a slowdown in delivery and production, which has been a big help for us because as some other people may be waiting for stuff, we've been able to continue trucking forward. But along with that, we do have a US presence. Kansas City, Missouri is where the United States office is at. They do have their own warehousing facilities that they keep some product, but if there is something that has to be ordered in, it's just a matter of a couple of days before they're able to get it to the US. 24/7 global tech support. Now, the reason I'm mentioning this is not specifically for us as the installation company, but unlike some products that are out there, Gallagher views you as their customer as well. So if for whatever reason we are not available, or if you decide that you want to take more ownership over the product, you have the ability to call Gallagher Tech Support as well and get that support if you need it 24/7. And since they are on a different time zone, they have support across the world. They do support systems on pretty much every continent around the world as well. In-to-in product ownership, this is also something else that is very unique for a product line. They develop, they manufacture everything from the rare polymers all the way to the circuit boards and the software that is put out. So everything is handled and trusted through them, not through a third-party chip manufacturer that potentially could, that put vulnerabilities in there. Another point is true peer-to-peer communication. This is huge, especially for school systems because of the aspect of lockdown capabilities. If you have a system that does not have peer-to-peer communication and you hit a lockdown button in one school, if the server is down, you do not communicate from panel to panel. Whereas with peer-to-peer communication, if the server is down, the panel does not care and it continues to relay that message from panel to panel. So it's a very nice system, as I mentioned, for lockdowns where you don't have to worry if there is a server issue. You know that if you press that button, that the action will happen. We are one of the only, there are a couple others, but one of the only systems that has a true integrated intrusion alarm. So if you decide at some point you want to put your alarm system, where you arm and disarm that in the evenings, on as well. It is not a separate system that we have to put in. We can actually integrate that straight into the system that we are selling you without going to a lot of expense or hardship in doing so. And one of the other benefits to that is that you can, if we have to look at jurisdiction for some of this, but if you're within the same responding police area, it's only one monitoring account that has to be used for multiple buildings. We don't have to worry about having a monitoring account paid for at each location. And the last couple of points there, we do have an integrated visitor management system that is built into the system. It's just a matter of purchasing a license for it and also an integrated VMS or video management for, it's approximately about 16 to 18 video management systems right now, and the list continues to grow, but you can have that worry. It will integrate the video straight into Gallagher Command Center. So in-to-in encryption, this is something else that's very important. Unlike some systems that are on the market, we have integration all the way from the command center server and workstation, which would be the way that you would interface into the product, all the way out to the reader. So that means that someone can't go and pull the card reader off the wall and you'd never know about it. This is something where the same encryption that is used for banking encryption is used in these systems. So you can guarantee that, at least for the time period, obviously, we know that everything is susceptible to fail at some point in the future, but at least for the time period, it's some of the most secure technology out there. And Gallagher is continually working on increasing their security too. That is one of their big strives every time they release product, is to make sure that they have the best security that they can offer for the end user or the customer. So mobile solutions. So this is an example. This is just a layout of how the Bluetooth application works. We have Bluetooth applications that can work as cards. So you can, instead of having your physical card with you, you can carry around your phone, be able to get in or run functions within the system straight from your phone if you're within proximity to a Bluetooth reader. The nice thing from an IT standpoint is we don't have to require any port forwarding because it uses cloud provisioning. So it uses an outbound port. It does not require any inbound. And then the cloud provisioning server actually sends that Bluetooth credential to the end user. So there's no port forwarding risk within the system for using the mobile credential or mobile connect solution. And then here is some benefits to that. I won't touch on every one of those, but the biggest benefit is that with a card, even though they're not super expensive, they still do cost. And if you lose a card, then you potentially have to either pay for that, or you may also, as it mentions there, the fifth one down, you may have a cloned card out there, someone that has that identical card as well. But with a Bluetooth credential, that's not the case. You have a little more control over it. You can send this to traveling people, maybe a traveling team that's coming in. Just send it through email. They have a credential for the time period that you allot them, and then at the end of that time period, that credential goes obsolete or inactive and it comes back into your queue. There's about a minute-long video. All right. So obviously, that was very, I don't want to say very vague, but it's an indication of what could happen. Now, we can add the video in there. We can add the ability to be able to utilize macros, which are pressing a button and multiple things happening. In that event, shunting, which means bypassing something, all that from a single site plan. And for you guys, especially being a multi-location school, the nice thing about that is the fact that it gives you the ability to watch all the schools from one pane of glass and then pin down to each one of those schools to see exactly what's going on and potentially even to be able to address that alarm from the site plan. And this is the point, which I'll reiterate this at the end of the presentation as well, but we have a full demo that goes anywhere from two to three hours. The site plans really come alive in that demo because you can see and interact with it a little better as a live demo. All right. So the hardware is the next piece to this. So we use what is called H-Bus, which is an RS45, if anyone's familiar with electronics. It's a very fast transmission that works on just a two-wire schematic. So with one aspect, we can go with a four-door controller. Or if you want to go up to eight doors, we can throw an eight-door add-on module onto that instead of the four-door. Now, each controller 6000, which is this unit, the top unit right here, can go up to 10 doors per controller 6000. Now, that doesn't mean you can only max out of 10 doors per location. We just put an additional controller in there, and that is the brains behind the operation that, as I mentioned before, if that server goes down, that controller 6000 is a mini-computer that is running in the background that will continue to process events like it should and like it was told to do originally. So as you see, as we start adding readers in there, this is the process to be able to create on this the eight doors. And then we have an add-on module that we just throw onto this that gives us to the 10 doors. Now, the cool thing about this is that unlike some other systems, we have addressable readers. So let's say you had 10 doors of access control on this existing layout here, but you wanted to go to in-and-out readers to be able to see who is coming in and out of the IT closet, mechanical rooms, whatever it is. Many systems, you have to run a new wire over there from the controller, hook that up, and it becomes another reader input. But for us, it's a matter of putting six inches of wire and throwing a reader onto the other side of that wall. We address it and it becomes a in-and-out reader system on the same controller without a lot of expense and overhead with that. Now, we talked about expandability. We already talked about the alarm portion. Whenever we have this existing 10-reader system with the in-and-out readers, if you want to do your alarm panel on there, we throw in some input-output modules and bring your existing inputs into that. Those become part of that pre-existing system. Then you want to put some sirens or control some outputs. We throw another module on there, all onto the same existing system that now gives you additional output controls. And then we have what's called a 16 by 16 as well. This is used a lot of time for machinery. If you have a lot of inputs and outputs you need to control at the same time, we can put one of these in there and have a large quantity of IOs that we have control over in an instant. And once again, keep in mind that is off of that existing 6000 controller that was put in initially. All right. So the next piece, very briefly, we'll talk about is the MyFair access cards. There are two different types of technology. There's smart cards and there are what's called proxy cards. Proxy cards are 125 kilohertz technology and these are 13.56 megahertz technology. So these have multiple pieces of chips on these cards that you can put different things into. Many schools use them for lunch lines, so they can be used for different technologies all off the same chip. But the key, the important key here, is the security of it. On Amazon, for about $25, you can buy a cloner, and I actually carry one in my bag with me, that will copy over an existing card on these 125 kilohertz cards. Whereas the MyFair smart card, as of right now, the EV2 distribution that we're using now is not clonable. And there's a 30-second video that kind of shows you how that can be done.
Get unfettered access into the building, usually at night. This is a high-frequency antenna. This will just connect to the reader/writer with a cable. And then this little device here, it's a mini-computer, effectively a cloner. It's as simple as walking next to someone, asking someone a question, or even sitting in an elevator and passively capturing the people around you.
So that gives you an idea of how easy it is. Someone could put this in a coffee cup. They could be walking around with it in a bag, walk next to somebody that has a proximity card or one of those 125 kilohertz cards, and they can become them. That's, you know, if you think about security, that's not a good place to be if you don't know how many of a specific card is roaming around. These can be made, as was shown in this video, from pieces and parts that you create yourself, or as mentioned before, you can also purchase these from Amazon and have a pre-working cloner that can make you someone else, for example, the principal or the superintendent of a location. So the technologies, there's a list here of the different cards, and some of these are MyFair, but they are earlier versions. The nice thing about Gallagher is they stay on the forefront of security, as I mentioned before. Once these start coming out and start having issues, they are already in the works of creating or implementing the next technology to make sure that security is of the utmost importance. So currently, as I just mentioned, we are on EV2, and as of right now, those cards have not been compromised. So, but Gallagher is already working with the newer technology to start implementing that whenever it's ready so that they will be available when needed. So the big thing about Gallagher is the integration. There are different things that you can do, from the hardware to the site management to visitor management to your cardholder database, all the way to perimeter, if that's something you choose to do. And this is just a list, and I definitely don't have time to go through all of these, but the video management system, third-party readers to biometrics, key cabinets, integration, all the interface tools. This is just a part of the interface and the integration that can happen whenever you go with a system that can be built on and expanded out. And then very briefly, we have notifications. We have different ways we can do that, through the Mobile Connect app that we are showing, the Bluetooth, through email, through text notification, or through some email templated notification as well, that can send out mass notifications just at a push of a button or an event such as a lockdown that would happen without user input. And we'll actually skip this because we talked about the integration tools. The last three slides, we'll go very briefly through. These are some integration partners that Gallagher works with. Salto Solutions, which is a wireless lock system. They have a built-in integration that works with Salto Solution. A new one that has been brought out is actually just within the last month, was Invixim Biometrics Integration. It actually does temperature detection integration built into the system. So you can put these readers onto a system and be able to use biometrics plus temperature detection with a built-in integration into the Gallagher system. And then the final slide is of our partners that we have within the US. University of Tennessee is one of those. Jefferson County Schools down in Kentucky. Louisville, Kentucky is one of those. Kroger, R&amp;L Carriers. So there's a full list of ones that already have the existing Gallagher system in place that are currently working with some of those integrations as well. So that will, I'll go ahead and stop the screenshot, that will complete the presentation portion of it. And I will get you to unmute there possibly. If anybody has any questions. Randy, I think you guys are still on mute.
There we go.
There you go.
Any board questions?
How easy does your system integrate with someone else's?
I'm just going to ask, this is a kind of a clarification, like what are you talking about?
So, so let's say police officers within the county having access to other schools, would their FOBS be able to be programmed, or their keys be able to be programmed to interact with?
I don't know, until we test it. I can't say 100% for sure, but I will tell you that our readers are what's called multi-technology readers, and they are, they do all of MyFair and they do 125 kilohertz if we turn it on. So we have been able to mimic about 80% of the cards out on the market to be able to create a card type within our system that will allow it to be used. Now, obviously, keep in mind that would be lower security product keep-ups. That is potentially creating a security risk, but yes, we can bring in other card types in our system to be able to make it work. Thank you.
Any visitor questions? Jeremy, Theresa?
Joey, what's the installation timeline on something like this, on the, at least on our quote here that you have with the number of doors that we were looking at? What would you estimate installation time?
The best way I can answer that is probably depends on IPO, just because of getting resources. Obviously, I'm assuming this is going to happen during summer. With the size that we're looking at of the project, my rough guess would be about a month-long project. And a lot of that goes down to the actual installation and making sure everything's set up the way that you want it, making sure everybody's trained and happy, and then making sure it's all working properly. But just kind of without getting into the nuts and bolts, that's what I would just put about, I guess. Start again.
Thank you. Anybody else?
What kind of, what kind of problems have you had with the systems you put in place? And what can we expect as far as that goes?
So what kind of problems have we had with the, and I'm going to just repeat this because the audio is a little low, you know, but what kind of problems have we had with the systems, putting them in, and have we seen with them? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I always, and this is probably my favorite statement to say about Gallagher, the thing I love about them is the thing I hate about them at the same time, it's how open of an architecture that they have. And the reason why is because I'm a geek at art. And I'm a techie guy. I love this kind of stuff. This is what I do in my spare time at home. And because of that, I go down rabbit hole really quick whenever I'm working on programming system. And so because there's not like some of those clear sets, step one leads to step two and two to three, three to four, it can sometimes get me into, get us, I'll say get us, this program's into a little bit of a head scratcher because we maybe did a couple of things and we didn't even think about it. But obviously, it's very easy to backtrack on that. That's usually the biggest problem that I've seen. But with that same thing being said, because of how open it is, we can do a lot of things that traditional access control systems cannot do. And so it's kind of one of those double-edged swords. It's got a lot of things that it can do, but because of that, it can sometimes get us as installers into a little bit of a bind. And like normally, all that requires is just putting a call into tech support, letting them see it, and they can point right to exactly what we did wrong and steer it back in the right direction.
Hey Joey, how much are those cards, how much do the card readers usually cost? I know you can buy them in like a bundle of what, 100, 500, something like that. How much do they usually cost? About 50 cents a piece or something like that?
Give or take for the cards. So there's cards, there's FOBS, and there's mobile credentials. Your costs, the FOBS are probably about $6 a piece. The cards are about five, maybe four, and then the mobile credentials are about nine. So, and I'll say this, you can buy the cards and the FOBS third-party. Amazon, Alibaba. But I will tell you also that if you buy them at too cheap of a location, I'll say Alibaba is one of those examples, you'll probably get one out of every five or six that will network. So Gallagher's, you know, if something happens, that happens, we can get it replaced without any issues. But you're looking well under $10 for a replacement, but you know, still, you have 50 people that lose cards because if you're getting to bring them, that's still a pretty decent cost. So we always recommend customers putting in a replacement policy, that if maybe the first ones free, after that, they've got to pay to replace them. So that maybe kind of keeps them honest on making sure that they keep track of those problems.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. We'll have the administrators get back with you.
All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you.
For those of you in the audience, we have another presenter that's going to present in person.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Driving over here, I anticipated about eight, maybe 10 people for this presentation, so thank you. We don't get to present to a crowd this size this often, so. Can everybody hear me okay? My name's Michael Parks. I'm with Technology Contracting Services out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. Thank you for having us this evening. I have Brian Slusher, one of our education sales reps with me. He's the one that worked with engineering, putting the numbers together for this project. We initially looked at about 65 or 67 doors. That's been whittled down to, I believe, 32 or 33. We spent probably more time than we should looking at these doors, but on buildings, you have to do that simply to get the right hardware in the right place. That's the important part. And I mention that because that sort of engineering, that sort of attention is important upfront. Technology contracting has been around about 20 years. We're based out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. We have about a 75, 100-mile radius that we like to install and service in. That seems to work well for us as a business and work well for our customer base as well. We can service them in a timely manner. Gets our staff home at night. It works well for us. We learned from this project, from another school district, actually. We called in Manchester several times and had no luck getting in with the administration. And out of the blue, somebody called me one day and said, "You need to get ahold of Manchester. They're doing some doors over there." So we gave them a call and we came over. Thank the Lord, here we are. Technology contracting has about 14,000 doors to date with card access. They have that with two systems. One is HID, one is a system called CARRY Systems. All those doors are within, again, 75 to 100-mile radius of Fort Wayne, Indiana. We've had these same manufacturers for over 15 years that we work with. We choose solid products. We choose products that's proven. We have our staff that's trained. We also have remote access into these systems, which is important, so we're not getting heavy service calls, heavy warranty issues. We're very proud of our product line. We spend a lot of time looking at it. On our quote, we have 33 doors scattered throughout the whole district, including the admin building. Some of these doors are very easy to install, pretty straightforward. Other doors, I can think of two of them right now that I'm not sure we're still on how we're going to install them. You got, you got some challenges over here. And I bring that up simply because this is what we do. When you check us out, when you call around, when you look at our references, what you're going to hear is that we're a service-oriented business. To name drop, just in Wabash County alone, we work exclusively with Wabash MSD Schools. We work exclusively with Wabash City Schools. Heartland Career Center. We just finished up the New Eagles Theater. Wabash Lions Church. We're doing some, we're doing some donations for that Lighthouse Mission. Lighthouse Mission. I could go on. Do a lot of work with Wabash County. We've started to work with local law enforcement as well, the SRO officers, allowing them to do remote programming on these systems as well. What that allows us to do is not only give themselves but first responders access to these buildings, and they can control that if the school district allows. So far, the other two districts have taken us up on that offer. That allows them to disperse, control their own key FOBS for their own staff. They're set up in their own groupings. They control it. They love it. Sometimes we even see these key FOBS in the knock box, which is the fire alarm box on the front of a building for fire departments and first responders. It works out well for them. Technology contracting likes to integrate this system, which is CARRY Systems that we were promoting here, into multiple features. One of it is, not only a time clock system, we can introduce it into a CCTV system, and we do that all the time. We get a lot of districts that are not interested in that. And then when we actually set that and show it and demo it for them, they fall in love with it. The first thing we have to do is see if they have a system that's open architecture that can accept that. And if so, we tie cameras to specific doors. It allows for reviewing. It allows for access. It allows for remote viewing instantaneous. They love it. It's a great add-on sale. Nobody ever buys it up front, but we always add it on on the backside. Do we have any questions so far? Great. Our software is not proprietary. Our software is software that you have, you own, you get updates on your servers. You have direct access with the manufacturer for tech support and training updates if you want it. We can do that for you. Quite a few times, we work in service updates and quarterly training. That goes on for about a year or 18 months, and then after that, the school district has it. But at times, on server updates and server crossovers and things of that such, you can call the manufacturer directly if you have questions. You can work with them one-on-one for solutions and integrations. If you're not comfortable with us, if you're not comfortable with anybody, you can contact the manufacturer for the hardware and for the CARRY card access systems. Our warranty for our equipment is five years. Five years manufacturer equipment warranty, not from us, from the manufacturer. We have one year. Anything related to the card access system in one year, we're covering. Mainly, this focuses specifically on the hardware piece. Buildings move, buildings shift, things have to be adjusted, and things have to be dialed in. It can be a gray area sometimes on whose responsibility this is. Our hardware's not shifting, your door frame's shifting. It can be a little tricky there. If we go ahead and cover it for one year, we take care of everything. Even if it's your hardware, we work with you to show you how it's moving and what we can do to stop it in the future. We work with you, we like to have usually two or three, we call them super users, anybody that can program the system, anybody that can access it. Not that they will, but we have two or three people that we call super users. We train them, and then we get them certified from the manufacturer as well on the software. As software is not only driven by iOS and Windows, you can also have it on an app on your phone if desired. These phones, excuse me, these doors can be triggered from your phone and opened remotely if desired, as well as a tablet, as well as a laptop, desktop. You can ping doors and open them if desired. As far as history, as far as access, reporting, we can customize them for you. We actually take this information and now we float it into Excel. We used to create it, we used to try to use the manufacturer's reports. Everybody has different reports, everybody wants to customize it. So we simply float it into Excel right now, and we work with you to develop these reports. Again, once that happens, you take it and run with it. We encourage ownership of the system, we encourage you to take ownership of the programming. Any questions?
I have a couple. You said that the SRO's first responders have emergency program. Whether that app is on their phone or on a fob, do they have the ability to lock down the building?
Absolutely, they can do that. And that's something that we, we call the needs assessment. We come in and we sit down with you. Opening and closing doors, locking doors is obviously just the beginning. We call that the ripple effect. We sit down and we talk about, how do we want these doors to schedule and open? When do we want them to open? First responders, who do we want to have them? How do we want to trigger these doors? Who has access? Do we want to have super user groups on first responders? We work with you, because it's actually pretty intense. Quite a few times, fire alarm, or excuse me, fire response, they have to go to a single door, because that's where their knock box is, that's where their key works. So they always go there first. We try to encourage them to go to any door. Any door, they can fob their way in right away. So can we do that with the phone? Absolutely. We don't like to use an app, because everybody changes their phone, nobody updates apps, and there's too many, too many loose pieces there. We like to stick with the fob and let them know that they can come in.
Okay, is there an additional charge for the phone app?
No, there's not.
Related to cost, after the one-year service agreement, what would a trip charge be to come and adjust a door?
Yeah, we have a trip charge of thirty-five dollars out of Fort Wayne, that's one way, that's a one-time charge. Then we charge ninety-five dollars an hour for service.
Maintenance. Is there maintenance to the switches, anything like that that needs to be done per year?
None, not at all. We put surge suppression on the power supplies, we use your network, your switches, to have the panels talk to each other. Again, we encourage you to take ownership of it. At the end of installation, we actually go through each door, we show how to adjust the door, we show how we installed it. We have extra hardware we will give you, again, to encourage you to take ownership of it. That's about a ninety to a hundred day, a hundred and twenty day process for something like that.
Have you had conversations with our IT department?
I have not.
Okay, thank you. Board, any other questions?
If the server goes down, does the system go down?
It does not. It goes into standalone mode, is what it does, and it'll sit there and buffer. We've had some buffer for three, four months. We've had nursing homes that didn't know they were in buffer mode, and they'd go out and try to ping a door, do a program change, and it wouldn't hit. And they would realize that we're in standalone mode. Nothing. They fix the problem, once it gets back online, the history comes in and loads back up.
Can you explain standalone mode?
Sure, sure. Think of it as a network panel. All these panels located throughout the building talk to the proximity readers located at the door. The things that should wave a prox meter or a card up to. Those talk back to a panel, which talk to a group of panels, which resides on a network. They all communicate together. Now, something happens, somebody comes along and cuts a wire. Communication breaks, a switch goes down. No matter what happens, the panels go into standalone mode. They simply identify themselves as standalone, and they work just as they're programmed to work in standalone, not constantly communicating. If you propagate into the door, that information instantly goes in, the buffers in your server will come up and pull up a video feed, if we're tied into a video feed. All that will still happen as long as we're networked together. If we're in standalone mode, what'll happen is that door will open and close just fine. But we're not going to make any programming changes, we're not going to add any users, take any users out, as long as it's in standalone mode, because we cannot talk to it on the network.
So how, just say, for instance, we had an ice storm and the power was out for two days, would the door still open and close?
Yeah, we do, that happens a lot, actually not for two days, but it happens a lot, usually for anywhere between eight and twelve hours. We do thirty-six hour battery backup on this, and that's based upon the usage. Everything we have is in fail-safe mode. Now what that means is that it's not energized, or it's not receiving power. If you have a magnetic lock, there's power that's making that magnetic lock work. If you lose power, that lock's going to hold it up. So what we're talking about is all the hardware that we use is fail-safe. If you lose power, it's going to stay locked. Whether it's mad, whether it's a door strike, it's going to stay locked.
Any other board questions?
Well, just, do you have one here? Besides the hardware adjustments, what are there issues that you ran into with the other school corporations in the county with your system?
I think the other issue is that they would have one super user that takes care of it. And that's pretty common, the go-to person, if you will. We help them set up a site allocation, usually in somebody's office, where they add users, take out users, hand out new badges, or hand out new fobs if somebody new comes in or loses one, is dismissed. Usually, sometimes there's not a backup for that person. And that person's sick, that person quits, all of a sudden we have a void right there pretty quick. Somebody tries to step in, but they haven't seen it. That's the biggest one right there, is not having redundancy in your staff. Be at least two people deep in it. So it's very easy to do.
Yeah, one more question. How many different fobs do you have available, and also, how much are those fobs?
Several different fobs. Technology wise, how they communicate is the big key, nobody here cares about that. We talk about durability, we talk about longevity. These are passive tags, which means there's no batteries in them, there's no power in them. They get activated by the proxy to themselves. When you buy a hundred or more fobs, key fobs, do you have a key fob? You have a hundred more fobs, they run five dollars a piece. And they're hard plastic. The one I have on my keychain's probably twelve or thirteen years old right now.
I have one more question. Under this SRO first responders programming, if we have an emergency here and the alarm goes off, everybody wearing a badge in Wabash County's coming, are they going to be carrying a fob for MSD and a fob for Wabash and a fob for Manchester?
No, we, no, we work with that, so it's one fob. And we also work with them that that one person will take care of that, for a city or for a county. If we didn't do that, every time there was a change, we would have to go to three or more school districts to make changes. So, no. And they do that remotely, is what we do, is we work for them. And we partition that off. They do not see any other programming in the system unless you desire them to. We partition that off strictly for their staff and for their entry, and then they get add and delete at will. You see it, of course, as well, but they take care of it. They take ownership of who has access and from what department.
Any other board questions?
I got one. Jerry?
Mike, just two parts here. One, based on the quote that you gave us on this spec that we have currently, how long would you expect installation to take to do those thirty-three doors? And then my other question was, a fob, if someone leaves, an employee leaves, can we reuse that fob and reprogram it, or is that just obsolete?
Install for this project, we would anticipate four to six weeks, depending on receiving the hardware, which has not been a problem. The control equipment has not been difficult, but the hardware has been difficult lately. Four to six weeks. We naturally would like to do that in an opportune time when the buildings are not occupied. More times than not, we do them when the building is occupied. It's not a problem. They don't have building access or card access already, they don't miss it. But we have to work around kids and ladders and hallways and things like that, so we like to pick and choose if we can. And your second question was about the fob, I'm sorry?
Yeah. If an employee would leave our school corporation and we have their fob, can we reprogram that fob for a different person, or does that fob just become obsolete and can no longer use it?
No, the fob can be used multiple times. It can be deactivated, it can be reactivated, it can be reassigned. Quite often, people find them in their cars, three months later when they clean their car. I don't clean my car that often, but some people do like this. And they bring it back and say, hey, sorry, I found my fob. You can take it, throw it in the box, and reissue it again, absolutely, it's been deactivated. And you can temporarily deactivate somebody. Somebody's going to go on National Guard, they're going to go on duty, they're going to be gone for six weeks. You can go in and program them out for six weeks. At the end of six weeks, they magically come back online. So.
I have one more question. Are these things rechargeable, or what's the battery life in them?
Yeah, the fobs that you have, there are no batteries in them at all. So they're called passive. So what happens are, the prox reader that is on the building, that actually sends out an electrical field, and that activates and charges the fob, and then it communicates to the prox reader, tells it who it is, opens the door. As soon as you get about three or four inches away, it goes dead again because it's lost its electrical charge. No batteries.
Thank you.
No batteries. So hang on to those, show them around, fantastic.
Any other board questions? Visitors? Okay, thank you very much. Somebody from the administration will get back to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming.
This one?
Yep.
Yes.
Would you step up to the podium, please, and kind of go over what? Yeah, Randy can put it up on the screen for the visitors.
Do you want me to start from the top?
Sure.
Okay, so we've talked since I was hired three years ago about moving the offices, current offices to the front. That's been something we've just hand down, hands down know that that's a safety issue, so that's on there. We want to take that space and make our current offices a STEM room, so you would have storage, you would have different flooring that's conducive to cleaning up. So part of it is, STEM, we know STEM's important, but that would be the center of our school, and that's one thing that we've backed. We've spent a lot of time promoting our STEM program, so, and we've heard from the community. If you ask any one of our kids, what is your favorite thing to do, and this is no offense to all you other teachers, because you know, you're great too, but they'll tell you, my kid loves STEM, I love STEM, I want to see Mr. Eisenhower, wear STEM. So we just feel like it's something that the state has been promoting, we have been kind of getting behind it, and we want to make that the center of our building, so. Then we would also move the clinic to the offices as well, so you would walk in, you would see the secretaries, there'd be a conference room, and then the clinic would be there because we don't have twenty-four, seven, or at least daytime nursing all the time, so the secretaries and myself watch kids, so that needs to go with the offices as well. One thing we really wanted to do was open up the commons to double our floor space. Currently, we cannot host an event with all the students and their parents because we don't have the space to host them. So if we do an example, muffins with mom or donuts with dad, we have to break them up, and it becomes a four-day event or a two-day event, because not everyone can fit in there at once. So if we put the loft in, that doubles our floor space, it also opens it up for teachers, they can take groups up there and do project-based learning, which is messy and you need lots of space, and it's not something where you say, well, we do it now and it's difficult. We're going to, we're going to do our project, and then by the way, we're going to shut it down in forty-five minutes and clean up, and then they're dragging it back out, right? Thumbs up, because yeah, see, check for understanding. So we just want to have space to, so the kids can spread out and learn, and that would do that for us. We also wanted to rip out the current stage, and then make that a more open space, and then put big garage doors to go into the gym. I'll talk to them, I'll use my teacher voice, it's going to work. So then we want to just open the garage door, open that up during recess for kids to go in, run around, and just make it more of an open, shareable space. That would also include, that would also include getting new seating, so that when we do have groups in there, you can move the tables easily, they're not super heavy like they are now. And then that space for the stages could also be used as like a gathering place, or loft could be used as a gathering space. Right now, if you need to go from one side of the building to the others, did you get it? Right now, if you need to move across the building, which we do a lot, you have to either cut through the art room or cut through the media center, and there's classes in there, so it's distracting. I myself cut through there all the time, I'm super guilty of it. We ask the teachers, hey, can you walk your class around? But we do it all the time, we cut through. Sometimes we have to move kids around who are having a meltdown. And our calm down room is on one side of the building, and the students on another, so you have that going on as well. So we need, we would like to have a hallway to go through the media center to do that, to fix that problem. The bathrooms, that was not on our original list, and that's just on here, so I will not speak to that. I did not ask for fobs, that was something that was put on. We do need additional parking. This was, has been an issue, again, when we have grandparents in for grandparents' day. They're parking in the grass. Any event, parents are parking in the grass, so you have to say, hey, we can't have a lot of things in the spring because it's mushy. So parking has always been an issue. And then we would just like to update our playgrounds. Some of the equipment is, just needs, needs some, a little facelift. We want to add more of an interactive sensory type of playground, so kids have something to do out there. There's some, if you saw my original presentation months ago, there's examples of that on there, just different things kids can do, so. Part of the cafeteria would be ripping out the flooring and putting, ripping out the carpet and putting down some type of tile that absorbs sound. and putting down some type of tile that absorbs sound. We want to put walls around the cafeteria, one for safety and two because sound. It will help bring the sound down as well. And then the doors are on here, and that's something we talked about was for safety. So if we're Section C, enclose the ramp. I did not ask for this, and I completely disagree with it if you want my honest opinion. That did not come from our strategic plan, and that did not come from my staff as well.
Where's this ramp? Is this?
The music room.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I will keep going. So then that takes us to Section C, number two. It says, close the stage and remove the steps. That again, did not come from us, so I will not speak to that. But I will go down to, the other stuff is just from the first page. Window film, we had talked about when we had the officers in. They talked about putting, I don't know, film over the windows to make them bulletproof and safer, so that's on here. Presentation in the commons. We currently do not have presentation equipment. Sometimes we borrow some from MIS. Sometimes we just wing it and use it without it. We will pull in a Promethean board, but even my staff struggles to fit around that board if we're doing something on Wednesday morning. So that's something, even when I was hired, they're like, oh yeah, we're gonna do that. Well, then it's been kicked down the road, so we need to go back to that. Battery-operated water faucets. Many of our faucets are just broken. They run nonstop. So we're constantly going in there, tweaking them. So those just mainly need updated. I'm not sure what the wireless system is. That was not my request, or the data switches. But the cameras are, do need replaced. There are a few that are, some high-traffic areas that we would like to have fixed. And more cameras on the playground. And then more on the, like, in the bathroom areas, just those areas that kids tend to get into mischief. So... That is all of it.
Board, Mr. Raymer? Comment?
So if you didn't ask for it, where did some of these come from?
Well, the, enclose the ramp, I believe came from you and Mr. Tersflinger, and I believe Mr. Booker was a part of that, moving the STEM room and enclosing that music hallway, the music ramp.
So I think part of this, you know, it would take them about two years to put this list together, basically, right? From all, from all these schools.
Eighteen months.
And now, and now as a group, we need to kind of look at this and we need to go back on it. We say, you know, number one, what's really valuable, and that's not the knock for work that you guys have done, and then, then look at other potential alternatives. So just because you didn't bring them up, I still want to have conversations, you know, around some of these things, why they wouldn't work. But the other thing we have to do then is look at this and then say, you know, financially, what can we afford?
Right.
Let's say you guys are the first phase, right, that we're looking at here. You're probably further along than definitely probably any of the other schools as far as, you know, this goes to something manable. So I mean, so just take that for granted. You know, the thought about using, instead of paying a quarter million dollars for tearing out the stage, the thought of using that for STEM, have you guys even considered that? Or do you, it's just, that's not what you wanted, so I don't even want to talk about it?
We wouldn't want to sacrifice, if we can't tear out the stage, which I get, it's a lot of money. We would want to keep it open. Because if you shut that wall, now you're, you've really closed in that space aesthetically. And we do use that space a lot. OT and PT take kids up there to do therapy. We use it when we have a staff, a staff lunch, because we can't fit, you can fit maybe ten people in my lounge right now, but if we want to eat together, we have to have somewhere to eat. We use it for kids that get like kindness lunch nominations. That, they go up there. So it's not that we're not using it. And quite frankly, if STEM has to stay where they're at, he's fine with that. It's not that we need, that we don't use that space. We just wouldn't think to put that up there. Like, I wouldn't want to sacrifice that space. I would rather leave STEM where it's at then. Because we do use it for a lot of other things.
And I'm just saying on this stuff, instead of us like starting out kind of adversarial or whatever, you know, I'm not even into that. You know, all we need to do is take a good look at these, kind of open and honest with, with the whole group and say, you know, what's doable here, what isn't? What, you know, we need to put a financial target. We need to understand what that is as we roll through each of these segments, you know, in the strategic plan. There are some, you know, there's some other conversations about, you know, what grades and what building is probably why, you know, the majority of people may be here tonight. That we're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to talk about some things like that and make some assumptions, you know, as a group as to where, you know, what we're gonna do. So I mean, as a, as a corporation and told, but I think, you know, starting out with MES is smart and the fact that you guys have got, you know, pretty, pretty good substance here of what you want to do. But it's one of those things like, so, so, you know, looking for input outside. How many of the folks in here were on your core committee?
Raise your hand.
Okay, so most, most of you guys are in the building. You work in the building, you know, for the majority. Seeing kind of new faces in here, so, you know. So there's some, you know, there's just gonna have to be some frank conversations and decisions made, you know, financially.
Right. And so eighteen months ago when we started this, we were told to dream big. So that's what we did. So it wasn't, hey, we don't care what the taxpayers are doing. It was stick it on there. If it, if it, if it supports our mission and vision, because that's what you need to go back to, does it support instruction? Does it help us send our message? I mean, are we marketing? Are we trying to reach new students? Are we keeping the families that we have? So yeah, do I need a slide in my cafeteria? No. But does that, does that make people calm and be like, man, that school's cool? Sure it is. And then they're gonna meet my awesome staff. But right now, when they walk in and they see carpet from nineteen eighty-nine, and it's like, oh. I get new kindergartners that come in and they look around. I'm like, oh, don't worry, we're gonna remodel. Like, those are things that are important to families now. Back when I went to school, nobody cared because you had to go to the community school, whether you liked it or not. So we kind of have to put the bells and whistles on there if we want to be competitive to the schools surrounding us. So no, I don't need a slide. I don't really need a, I do need a loft, but I can live without it. But if we just start with what do we need the most, right now, we need to move our offices. That's a huge thing. If you just start with that and rip out that wretched carpet in the commons, I think right there, that's fifty percent of it.
So like number one, and like all the carpet corridor cafeteria?
Just the caf, just mainly the cafeteria. It's gross, it smells, it's a nightmare to clean up. Just that rectangle alone would be amazing. And the front door, it's really dirty right there, so that's gotta go too. Right? You walk in, you're like, ugh, I know it smells. We have little kids.
Then the safety thing, we talked about the exterior doors. The parking, does that include, is that including any reroute?
No.
Two hundred and fifty so far. You got, is that, is that an idea we want to call, we want to look at?
I don't, I don't really think, I don't think we've even, like, that could take a whole committee to talk about the parking lot. I don't think that is, that's, that's above my expertise of... I know we looked at the Google Maps and said, oh yeah, we'd like a parking lot here. But I don't think we specifically went through and said, okay, well, then you're gonna turn here and come here, and the buses will be here and...
Okay. Where would, I mean, it's kind of number eleven on the A-list?
Yeah. I think, so when you come into my, the west, the west side?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yay. The west section, so you have the kindergarten, first grade playground. That's that grassy area that we don't really use. We use it for additional parking when we have to, but that would be great. I know people have said, you know, you could, you could run your buses all the way around the building. But honestly, I think if you just put the parking lot out front, the rest will be fine.
I think that's kind of what the old Chester school was, if I remember right. You had a big, you, all the buses came in there, the parents came on this side, kind of segregated traffic there.
The loft space.
Yes.
First of all, by the way, this, this is amazing, guys. This is, this is a lot of work. And I know it's been compacted down over the eighteen months, and it's, it's got some really, really good things on it. And I was really excited to talk tonight, or to, to work tonight on this, so thank you. So I think, I think one of the thoughts that I had about the loft was, if you had a loft, that space could be utilized as the same space as the stage currently does. So it can house the staff lunches with the lift and the slide. It can house the special lunches. It can house extra seating for donuts with dad and muffins with mom. And that way, the STEM space becomes as big as we possibly can make it. And I did get a chance to talk with Mr. Eichenhower. You know that. And the requirements that he has or that he asked for is, is very manageable as far as making that space a customized space for him. But that, that was kind of my thought. The loft aspect, I see as a lot more purpose than just extra lunch seating, right? It's collaborative space. It's, 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 teachers can take students up there during extra periods. They can recess inside recess, extra space, all sorts of fun, fun things. But if we close that wall off, I think if we have double lofts, that makes it a little clustered. And we talked about that. The reason you had double lofts was because of, if that open space was still there, going into the gym. But I think if we do one loft, we can still have the slides, still have the lift. We don't have the liability of the bridges. But, but that gives you, that gives essentially a good chunk there. And that was, that's just my thought. Again, it's just, these are all ideas and thoughts, and we work together on that. But I think that was, that was where the process on my thought and a couple, I don't know if there was anybody else that thought the same about the, about the stage becoming the STEM space. So I'll leave that alone.
I would just like to add that Section B total here, Mr. Raymer and I serve on the Facility and Finance Committee. And the board was not included in the strategic plan. We never attended meeting one. We got handed a list. So we did the meetings at MES, the junior high, the high school for a walkthrough. And we went and met with Amy at the building and walked through and tried to look at other options to give everybody what they needed. Maybe not exactly what they wanted. You know, just, I'm just gonna throw a figure out here for conversation. Removing the platform and opening the wall to gym for the space that you're getting at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes out to three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. I just attended a meeting today. The actual construction without engineering fees right now is a hundred and forty dollars a square foot for brand-new. If you use the architect's figure, it's two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So I kind of get the idea of the project, and they don't want to close in the cafeteria. That's fine. But I think there needs to be a conversation of, do we want to spend three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to stare out, tear out a? You know, I guess it comes back to my point. Demolition and construction is twice as expensive as new construction.
So to answer your question, it says four, sorry, I'm old, four hundred and forty-nine thousand. Would I want to spend that to rip a stage out? No, I don't. That's not good use of taxpayer dollars. So that to me, I would just scratch that off and leave the space as is. And maybe update it with some nice tables or whatever. But I, I would never ask Manchester Community to even fund that. Like, when we said we wanted that open space, we didn't know it was going to be that much money. So yeah, X that off. But then we need to go to the next line and be like, okay, but this we really want.
Yeah, and again, everybody needs to keep in mind, when you deal with an architect and he's throwing numbers out right here, he has to protect his reputation. He's not gonna tell you something costs two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
You know, he's got to protect his reputation and make sure he inflates that figure, put a contingency figure in it. So, and a lot of these numbers, other than the ones at the bottom, are twenty-two months old or someplace in between there, pre-COVID numbers. So I'm not sure how accurate they are until you get to the process. And we need to kind of look at the ideas and, and look at the, the prices and figure out what's gonna add value to the classroom, what's gonna improve safety, which is number one, and the quality of education. You know, that was why Brian and I come over and had a conversation with you and asked to get this other stuff. You know, we can, I'll just use the example of the hallway. Sixty-one thousand dollars to tear down a wall and move it four foot and put it back up when we could spend less than ten thousand and move the bookcases and spend another ten or fifteen to put all new carpet and fixtures in the library, and it accomplishes the same goal. Put the wall, the columns are right there. You put the wall up, floor to ceiling. You're not disturbing the people in the, in the library. You got a door at each end. Walk right through there. Just ideas, and that's what this meeting's about. We need to share these ideas and, like Mr. Henley said. We need to figure out what's, what's real, what we can do, what we can afford, and what goes on the dream list for the next board or phases down the road.
Mrs. Coret, can you, can you tell me on number six, what's updating finishing? And I know, I think we talked about updating the seating, right? You do tables and chairs. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what else is included in that updating finishing? Do you, do you guys know?
I don't know. Jeremy, do you know that?
Just trying to remember back what that entailed. Let me think a minute.
I mean, I don't, I don't see charging stations. I s, I mean, I, I see it, but then again, I...
That wasn't on my list.
Yeah.
But there were certain things in every building we know that we need to add, so that just went on the list as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna add something here, or ask a question here, because I think I know the answer to this. Were you talking about putting some kind of a finish along the columns in front of where your existing offices now to separate the cafeteria?
Yes.
Okay, that's probably what the finishes are.
I think we talked about glass on the top and like brick on the bottom.
I think that's what the finishes are.
That could be.
No, that, that's actually enclose commons. That's number...
Well, it says commons, remove concrete seating and add glazed something. And then the other one says add charging stations and update finishes.
Yeah, a hundred and twelve thou, that was number five. I was asking about number...
Six.
Six. So enclosing the commons with, with glazed and whatever else, whatever else is a hundred and twelve. But I was just wondering what the four seventy-eight title included. I knew that we, I had heard about new seating, but I hope that's not half a million dollars worth. I don't know if there's any updates as far as lighting, as far as, as far as paints, as far as, I don't know. I...
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if six and seven are, are related because adding a loft to the commons and adding a wheelchair lift, I don't think we're gonna get done for two-ten. I think, I'm wondering if those two are supposed to go together.
Six and seven, you mean?
Yeah.
Maybe. I don't know.
I don't know either. To be determined.
Mr. Markin, could you, could you find out that?
I was digging into some of my materials. I don't remember off the top of my head what that would have been.
Okay.
Too many documents we've had, too many spreadsheets going back. Could I, could I possibly interject? Because I think... Because I think I could make this a whole lot easier on everybody. Mr. South, could you pull up that document I had prepared? That has, yes, that one, enlarge it a little bit. Basically, what I did is I put our strategic plan goals on there to help us remember why we were doing what we were doing to stay focused. Also, our mission and vision statement there and what our commitments were. If you go down, there are some questions there and I think Mr. Hensley brought these up. Grade level configurations, those are some of the things we need to talk about. Are we looking at a construction bond? Are we looking at a referendum? Are we looking at a remonstrance? Are we looking at construction allowances for each, each site and what are those? So, because we have to have some sort of guiding, guide to know what we can select and what we can't and then how we re- we prioritize those needs and wants in each funding bucket. So, if you scroll down, we really should be looking at funding buckets. We have a lot of things on here, but we have a lot of different types, or a lot of different ways we can fund projects. And your big projects are your construction projects with your bonds and your leases that are long term. And you can't just throw in there a lot of equipment and things like that because those are considered soft costs and you're only allowed so much of that in those large projects. So, if you can prioritize what you want in your large projects and then you look at other smaller items that are gonna be more in a short-term bond, um, and then what, what can we put in our operations fund? Like, let's just say you have a big project that might be $150,000. Um, we can allocate 50,000 a year until we save up for that and then we have that pot of money that has to go in through the budget. Um, and then what kind of things would come out of our education fund? Because we've got a lot of different things going on here. And then you also have grants. I know we talked about the outdoor, um, when it was a classroom, that we could possibly think we could get a grant for that. So, I think if, you think in terms of funding buckets, it might be a little bit easier to prioritize what you're doing. You've had some good conversations, but which were these buckets, okay? That they would go in? You have your loft or whatever. I think number one was your office space move, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I kind of, you know, yeah, no, I think what I wanted to get at tonight was to look at this list with everybody in the room that works there, that, that runs a school and kind of go through and say, okay, what are the, what are the must-b's? What are the more's betters? You know, and then what are the lighters like the loft and stuff like that? So, I think we have to look at this and prioritize kind of what these are and then throw them, you know, throw in the funding.
And I agree, that's what I was just gonna try to throw in.
And I think the easiest way to do is just, we kind of started with number one instead of kind of jumping around the different ones. Let's, why can't we just kind of walk through this list, at least in the A section? And you, you know, what's co- what's doable, what isn't, what do you guys really want? So, you've already thrown, you know, like remove platform and open a wall. We, you know, I've kind of put a line through that, even though, you know, it may be doable. The exterior doors are gonna buy, it's gonna be a safety deal, you know? You kind of, the family restroom, I guess we'll have to talk about where that came from. But other than that, I'd look at, you know, I just finished this list out and say, what's, what's real priority? Because what we need to do is come up with, you know, some type of target figure for this school, you know, on a cost standpoint. Then you can throw it in your funding buckets and say, you know, this is how we're gonna pay for it and maybe that changes what we do and what we don't.
And that's why I did put that up there ahead of time, that you have to determine what, what you're thinking for each school or project.
So, the, so the first, the first three are, are those all basically together?
Yes.
So, the entire office would then be STEM, it would be nothing else?
Correct.
Okay, if we knock number four off, number five, commons, that's the one you're just having a couple conversations on what's in the 478. We don't know how to answer that right now.
Right.
So, that's, I got a little question mark by that. The loft, one question I do have on that, I mean, sounds cool. Is, is, have we talked to like the insurance company about liability?
No.
Or anything like that? So, we may wanna, we may wanna check that out, that angle.
Yeah, no, we haven't specifically yet. Um, I would assume that it would add a little bit to our casualty and liability insurance.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd kind of see a loft as a, as a delighter, right? Something that turn-
Surprise and delight.
Yeah. Backhaul through art room, is that really necessary?
Yes.
Or can we reconfigure?
Well, it's not the art room, it's the, it's the media center, the library. I think the art room was the original, they were gonna take down that middle wall, but I think Dave's right, if we just pull into the media center, build that, build that wall, it's still plenty of space to get classrooms through.
Okay, yeah, maybe the price goes down. Family restroom, where, where'd that one come from?
The, there's two restrooms in the office area, according to- There's two restrooms in the office area and according to Dana, uh, anything we touch in a restroom has to be brought up to code. Um, and what I don't see here, uh, we have the multi-stall restrooms with no access in between them to repair valves or water leaks. And with the transgender issue, there was some talk about modifying those and we've already built one restroom over there. There's just, it's an old building and there's just not enough restrooms in it, so when we looked at combining the restroom in the office area for the staff and administrators right across the, the hall, if Ben was gonna move into the area where the STEM is, we could repurpose that space because the plumbing is close and add another family restroom, but if he's not moving then, or unless there's another space for him. What we were looking at was trying to get a dollar fifty's worth of value out of every dollar we spent and the plumbing is right there. So, versus getting into what we did on the last one, busting out the floor and looking for a sewer line, that was, where'd that come from?
One of, one of those restrooms would be able to go, um, where the current nurses' station is and the current office. One of those could be converted since it's got the plumbing and everything there. Then the, the second one would just go wherever we could de- deem it the best place to fit. Um, so that was just a rough number that Dana put together, but one of those restrooms there would, could go in the existing office area where the, the current nurses' office is to, to construct a family restroom.
Okay.
And if you look, if everybody looks at, uh, under section B, stud the wall, wall finish, wall base, uh, and I think door frame and hardware, that comes out to about $6,000 to put the hallway through the library, media center versus 61,000. And like I said-
It's probably spent somewhere else there then, so.
Yeah, like I said, you know, the conversation we had with Amy when we were there was, you know, even if we took half of what was left, we could put all new finishes and carpet in the media center.
So, can you kind of put family restrooms, yellow, I guess? Look, you know, whatever, you know, whatever we're doing. The F will be exterior doors, that's the pops, right?
Yes.
That's safety, we're doing that, but we're, we're, you know, we're talking about that, I guess. Additional parking, we'll have to, maybe there's a group that we have to, you know, facilities can look at that. Playground, you know, you got a bunch of kids, I'd say that's kind of important, but, you know, looking at that and then, like if you go down to B, so cafeteria carpet replacement, that was a big one for you?
Yes, that's a keeper.
So, that's like 27?
Yes.
What else? So, you didn't have the closed ramp deal?
Mrs. Corr, I seem to remember you stating something about you didn't particularly want to change the doors?
I didn't, I just don't think they're a big deal.
Okay.
Everyone else, not this group, but the other schools, I think, want the doors changed. I, they probably do, I just, you know, I want something prettier and more fun than doors.
Do your doors have glass?
Yes.
Okay. And we talked about the exterior doors, you didn't want to go with the security-
I do not want solid-
Right.
Steel doors.
Right.
That screams penitentiary.
Yeah.
Opposite of what we want, what?
That's where the film comes in.
Correct.
Um, I'm trying to figure out how much space is actually going to be in the office, uh, compared to what would be on the stage. And I'm trying to figure out how high, high the ceilings are in the office compared to the ceiling on the stage. Also, with the 230,000, I assume that's busting out walls and making it one giant wall that's still inside. No walls, no windows outside.
But if we, if we, um, if we don't do that, I would rather leave the office alone and just get rid of like the secretary's big desk and just make that offices for people like speech, um, the Bowen Center. I mean, we do need more space like that, so it's not, I mean, that's not a deal breaker for me. We, we will utilize that space just differently.
How big is your, uh, staff, um, break room?
It's tiny.
Eh? So-
Maybe you can fit sixteen on a good day.
Sixteen?
But you're like-
Uh, Co- COVID-friendly sixteen?
Nobody eats in there now, well, first grade does, but they-
Sixteen with Crisco.
I do know that, um, I, I know that, uh, many schools have gone through updates, but I know that North Miami did the same thing with the, the, the offices. Um, and I'm, I, that's way overdue and I'm totally on board with, with that. Um, but they, they did do the speech and they did the, uh, a couple other things and they also had a, the staff break room in there as well, um, which happened to be right across from the cafeteria too, which works very well too. But anyway, you, there's lots of ideas for that.
Right.
So, that's not, that's not, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how, what the difference between the stage space if we had the loft, um, versus in the, in the, in the old office space. And the cost difference is pretty high too, but, um, I, I don't know, I'm just-
Well, if the cost is, if, if that's the biggest deal, then I would rather leave Mr. Eichenhower where he's at and he's never complained. I'm the one that said, oh my gosh, you need to, you need more space in here. Um, because he does go outside a lot. And we could find him other storage areas. For instance, across the hall from him is where we store all of our math manipulatives and paper. So, we could clean that out and make that his space. Um, but I would, then I would rather just, if you want to save that 223,000, I think, then I would rather just leave the offices, get rid of the nasty desks and just make it like an office.
Instead of utilizing the stage for, for stuff?
Correct.
Besides muffins with moms and bagels with dads or whatever it is in that presentation, what is the capacity of your cafeteria? I mean, I've looked at the facility audits until I'm blue in the face, but I'm sitting here right now and I can't remember-
On a normal year?
I- i- in a normal year, uh, day-to-day operations, are you at 50% capacity, 75? I mean, is there, do you see a need with the pre-K coming and some of the other things that are being talked about? Is that gonna overload your cafeteria? Because I'm looking at this-
Well, what you-
175 to 250 dollars a square foot, I'm, I'm leading you into a question here.
Right.
What is on the west side of that cafeteria? If we're taking these two classrooms and moving it in office and doing construction, can we add 30, 40 feet onto the end of your cafeteria? What's, I s- I saw a janitor closet, is there a utility closet with utilities in right there?
Yes.
That's what I was looking for.
So, what, so what you would do then is just start your lunch earlier. So, right now, we start at 11 and then because of COVID, we run a lunch every 30 minutes because they have to use the whole. But typically, what happens is we start at 11 and then it's 20 minutes. And so, one group comes in, they sit and eat, and then the next group, and then that first group leaves. So, capacity's not a big deal, but if you do have an all-school event, you can't, it's really challenging because it's long and narrow. Not everyone can, everyone struggle, some students struggle to see the speaker. So, if that's, if, we have an author that stands on the stage, it's hard to see, especially if they have a PowerPoint on the Promethean board. So, it's just a weird space.
And on the carpet, would you want to replace it with carpet? Or would you look at one of the new PolyPro or epoxy finishes?
Yes.
Okay, so my next question is, when we put these wall coverings in along the old office, are we gonna have to put some kind of sound in there up there?
I don't think so, because the new flooring now absorbs sound. At least that's what I believe Dana told me.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
So, the door kind of back, I'm just going right back where it was. The classroom door upgrade, B4, that's-
That was not on my strategic plan. So, I think as a district, that's something that we believe was important because it is a safety issue, but did I write that on my list? No, I did not.
I think that comes from the security tour.
I think so.
And then the other major ones would be down in D1, D1 and D2, because the other ones are tiers and security cameras apart of security, so. Presentation equipment and battery operated water.
Yeah, that's, that's important. It's, it's a huge pain to try and have a presentation in our building. There's just no place to have it and there's not equipment there to take care of it.
Can you green-nose Randy down in D? Kind of, I'd just like to see what, you know, if we look through this and sort out a little, it doesn't mean where we won't do other things, but looking at the cost of this and then going back and playing a little catch ball.
Right.
Basically, is what I'm trying to do is, you know, where are we at? What else do you think there may be other dot ideas that pop out here? You know, I don't know. Then, you know, not to throw, you know, throw us off balance here, but what, you know, some of these things we talked about, Cap, what if, what if 4.3 did go to MES? So, what's the, what's the thought on that from everybody that works there? And why?
For me, if you do that, and then I will let them speak because I think they deserve that. Um, it almost land lots us out. So, we're trying to grow MES and we're getting there. We've done a lot of work in the last three months. So, if you bring him at, MEF, bring 4th grade to me, that maxes out all of our classrooms. And then we start looking at things like our lit library is in a big closet. Um, things like our reading interventionists are scattered throughout the building because they have to give up their classroom, so-
Is there, so I, I get that.
Yeah.
Is there, and, and we'll hear from you as well, but is there any educational reason or any reasons other than space? Because I get what you're saying for sure.
For me, no, but I know they are for them, so maybe I should just open the floor for them.
Okay.
Hi. I can talk to a bunch of 10-year-olds until I'm blue in the face, but this is very intimidating. So, I typed something out, um-
Excuse me just a second, would you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, I'm going to, I wrote it down, sorry. My name is Stephanie Pinkerton. Um, I am in a unique position. I teach 4th grade at MIS, but I am also a parent of very young kids. I have a 4th grader, a kindergartner, and two who haven't even started school yet. My husband and I settled down here nine years ago with the main reason, reason being the school corporation. As a parent, I want the school that my kids go to to be top-notch, to offer programs and learning opportunities that the surrounding communities don't offer. I want my kids to have the support that they need, if they need it. So, as a teacher, I ask the following questions. Will moving fourth grade over to the elementary school take away any programs that we are actively promoting to the public as things that make us better than our surrounding corporations? Will space be taken away from our youngest and most vulnerable? I.e. STEM, minds in motion, RTI, small groups, cooldown rooms, et cetera? We are actively trying to market ourselves to bring more students in. Would parents from outside corporations want to send their students to a corporation that is moving things around so much? And what happens in two years when numbers jump back up? Fourth grade is a wonderful bridge between self-contained elementary classrooms and switching for multiple classrooms that start in fifth grade. Having fourth grade in a new building gets out the anxiety of a new school without completely flipping the teaching model in the same year. While I understand that running a school corporation often comes down to the bottom line, I am imploring each and every one of you to instead think about the one and only question that should always be asked. Is moving fourth grade to MES what is best for all students? Matt?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I get the feeling like you think we're trying to do something to you. I'm just asking questions. Like, I just want to understand that, you know, is there, are there ramifications to doing that? Um, you know, that's, that's why we're here is to, is to try to understand what's going on. And there's reasons.
I know.
We're not just flipping things around for the benefit of the...
Oh, no, no, I get that. I get that, but I want to-
We have reasons that that might need to happen. Um, and so we just want to understand, you know, what, what does that affect? So that's, that's what I wanted to hear from you guys.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Can, can, can I ask what the, I, I'm sorry, sorry. Can I ask what the reasons are?
Um, I-
I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, we'll get to that in a little bit.
Okay, that's it.
Uh, Dr. Rwell, can you tell us where the Title I money spent?
Title I money is right now all in MES. Can we say specifically how?
Yeah. Yeah.
So Title I, uh, is a beast. It's, it's a beast. Uh, we currently get two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars from the state. So that pays for our reading, um, specialist Beth Rosin, her salary. It pays for half of the STEM salary, Mr. Eichenhauer's. It pays for half of Mr., um, of our guidance counselor. It pays for two, um, RTI reading aids. Then we also spend the rest on supplies such as, um, like that's how we upgraded our Lit library. We spent twenty thousand dollars that, doing that. Um, anything that comes through, uh, we need books, we need supplies for the Lit library, we need supplies for, if the teachers come to me and say, "Hey, I want to buy this book for my classroom," I buy it out of that chunk of money. But it mostly pays for salaries and benefits.
And what I would say with Title I, it does, it's not building-specific. If we choose, we want to add fourth grade, we add fourth grade. We just have to go to the state, petition them, we have to fill out some forms and we can add fourth grade. Um, what I do know is our title funds, it sounds like they're going to be doubled and I have already spoken with, uh, the possibility of extending that through, uh, uh, MIS for the educational support. So if that happens, that is kind of our goal to do that, to make sure we have more support in that building as well.
So it would be fair to say until that happens that that would be a positive move in fourth grade because all those programs that were just mentioned would be available to a whole nother class, another hundred kids?
There's going to be some things that they're going to miss out on. I don't know. Tommy, do you want to speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, um, you know, I don't have nine years of experience living here and being in the district. Um, I've got a year and, you know, three-quarters. I've, I've been here two years. It's been two great years. And I think right now MIS as a fourth to sixth building, we've got a lot of great things going and we have, have a lot of great opportunities for our students. Um, and we're continually looking to seek and add more things. You know, right now, our fourth to sixth grade students can participate in a variety of activities, you know? One example would be extracurricular activities and intramurals. We offer a variety of clubs and, you know, things like robotics. Um, you know, our sixth grade students, uh, fourth through sixth grade students participate in intramurals after school. Um, our students are available to participate in student council. It's a big one, um, that our fourth to sixth grade students are a part of. You know, we talk about services. Uh, it comes down to advocating and then talking about what you need. You know, we realized after last year, we needed more instructional assistance to service our, our students that need reading. And it didn't come out of the Title I money, but what we did was we moved to grass paraprofessionals from MES to MIS because we saw that as a need and we saw that as a need for those students. And so it's about working together to do what's best for those kids. Um, something that we've talked about doing in the future that we kind of started on last, last, um, last school year is looking at our specials classes, you know, and what kids are interested in. This was something that, I, this is not our strategic planning meeting, but with our parent group, you know, they were interested in looking at, hey, can we add some more technology-type classes? Our students are interested in foreign language. You know, if we move fourth grade out of there, that's something that potentially those students would not be able to be a part of. Um, you know, if I look at our building and I look at the model of, you know, primary elementary school versus intermediate elementary school, you know, you tend to chain those intermediate grades together. Um, there has to be a natural break somewhere, but in your primary grades, you're looking at, at learning to read is, is a very big model. You know, I taught first grade and while we do teach comprehension and reading skills at all grade levels, you know, your phonemic awareness, your, your beginning phonics, you're putting words together. Um, you know, that's done a lot in pre-K, starting pre-K, K-one, two, four, five and six, we're really looking at, you know, reading to learn. So, you know, it's how can we use our supports, uh, you know, starting in fourth grade to be able to move those students on to fifth grade? And so we work and collaborate within the building, fourth and fifth grades. You know, what do we need to begin doing to prepare the students for fifth grade? And part of that has become switching classes for mathematics. You know, fourth grade is largely self-contained, but to get students used to switching and having multiple teachers, we switch for mathematics. And then by the time they get to fifth grade, you know, now they're switching for multiple periods a day. Um, two periods. You know, over this year, they're switched for math and then they have the same teacher for English Language Arts. And then sixth grade, it's kind of a full-scale model of what they're going to experience when they come to the middle school. So it's allowing them to safely have that opportunity to, to developmentally appropriately experience some of these milestones. And I think that, you know, moving fourth grade away from that would, would be a disservice to the students.
Any other questions, Laura?
Oh, yeah. How, uh, so in my mind, a little quandary here, okay? On the board for, I don't know however long, about the same time you've been here, right? A little over two years or something. I heard, you know, on one hand, I heard how our fourth grade kids weren't getting the support they needed, that their scores were lacking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, but on the other, then the other part of my mind, I'm looking at MES, you know, you don't think about-
Uh, can you excuse me for a second? I kind of feel a little faint, so I'm going to step out. Um...
All right, yes. You all right?
What I can say to that, Mr. Hensley, is yes, that was an issue when we had that board meeting and we had that discussion and that's when we, we actually sat down and we determined that we needed to send a couple aides over to MIS to address those needs. And so we did that for instructional purposes. And then we also put a couple more in the CARES Act money because of that reason. We want those supports over there.
And so I would-
So we've already put two in place.
So kind of to finish, what I, what I was actually saying was, you know, is that, you know, that was going to be my question to Tommy, is that taking care of that performance issue we have with fourth graders? And the other side of MES is, you're our recruiter, right? The dual-language, the pre-K, I mean, we got to grow this school corporation. So, you know, my mind's a quandary. If we've got, you know, the fourth grade performance issue, if we made moves on that, you know? But at the same time, you know, you have to look at the corporation as a whole. So if you've got, you know, first through third, fourth through sixth, now we've got, you know, seventh through twelfth. Now kind of in part of the school and, you know, in the other school. So I mean, you know, I can see there's logical reasons kind of from, from both angles here, you know? But the biggest thing, you know, driving me was the fact that we have a performance issue with fourth graders, you know, in the past and that was, so I don't know if there's any, like, fifth grade teachers in here, you know?
Yeah, their, their data was outstanding and you can speak on that.
I'm sorry.
Your data was outstanding, so.
What was the question?
Well, just about what was in my mind was the fourth grade performance issue that we had here about a year, year and a half ago and it was-
There were issues, but we've worked hard at bringing them back up to speed. And once you're behind, you know, it is hard to bring them back up to speed because once you're behind, you only have this much time to play catch-up. But we've worked really hard at bringing them back up to speed and we've seen a lot of growth this year. Um, but once you're behind, you're always playing catch-up. But again, we've watched their scores and they have been showing a lot of growth because we do the beginning of the year, middle of the year. In middle of the year, we saw a lot of growth. We've got the end of the year yet to do their tests, but we've seen a lot of growth so far.
So would you say the root cause of that performance issue was the lack of support at third grade or fourth grade?
No.
Then that we've addressed?
I, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. I think everybody's been working hard. It's just a matter of some students were having some issues. Everybody works hard to get their students to come along.
Yeah, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus either. What I'm saying, you know, is you had an issue. Did we fix the foundation that drove that issue? Is that what you guys are telling me?
I think adding the two pairs to our building has addressed a lot of the issue. We've got these two amazing reading professionals at MIS that are working in RTI intensively with students every day. And that, we have, this is the first year we've had that, so we still have like, we have to see how that's affecting our scores, but I really, they are incredible. Uh, they are really making a difference.
And that's all we really care about. If we recognize something that's broke, right? We fix it.
The iReady data has, has really been very positive, so we're excited.
I mean, I think we just ran into some students who were having some issues and it just takes a while to help them get back on board. I mean, I think everybody works hard. And I think like she said, we had some extra help this year that gave them a little boost.
Historically, was it just that one class we were looking at or was it every fourth grade class?
And that's what I was going to say too, is that class that you're speaking of right now? I forget who asked the question right now. But, um, that class, I think that you're speaking of, I just remember my former principal coming in and that class when they were kindergartners. And he said, "This class is a struggling class. They have been low for various reasons." Parent input, I mean, you could go on, socioeconomic issues, whatever, but they have struggled since kindergarten. You are going to have years where they're going to be lower-scoring years and you can, um, you know, think about the reasons forever. But the reality is, I mean, they're bouncing back. They're developmentally not where they should have been for multiple reasons, but you are going to have years when that happens. And I, I think the best thing about tonight is you have teachers here from both buildings and it would be really unfortunate if we were off with each other, but we are actually here very united. And I just think that, you know, we've been working on the strategic plan for a very long time. And I understand that not with the same board, like, some of you have come in and out and now, but of course, I mean, you had access to all the same information that everyone else did all these years if you were watching. So, and we've had meetings in the community and prioritized things a hundred times. And so I appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Hensley, of going through the list and trying to like highlight and finally we're like moving and things like that. But I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, that whatever issue we do, like moving fourth grade, is not going to solve any academic issues. If that is the reason, we have to say that we're doing what's best for students or we're doing what's best for the budget. And if we're doing what's best for the budget, that's fine, but we need to stop saying we're doing what's best for the students if that is the case because we need to work together to figure out what that is. Moving fourth grade, I love these fourth grade teachers. I love to work with them, but I don't even see the second and third grade teachers that work in my building. Um, so I don't think that's going to solve any problem academically per se. I mean, if you disagree, feel free to say so, but, um, so I just think balancing off what she said, there's just going to be years that are like that, so.
And I would just say too, over the past two years, uh, when I first arrived, we looked at assessments and systems and we put in iReady for that and they do standards mastery like monthly and then they do a diagnostic every quarter. So we are very data-driven in what we're doing and I think that's the reason you guys are doing so well because your data has been very, very, very good this year. I'm really excited, so.
Any other board comments, questions?
While I'm up here, I think we would be doing our students a disservice to move the fourth grade away from fifth and sixth. We have built such a good rapport for the students and building our program. Um, when the fourth grade wasn't out there with us, I always felt like there was something missing for our students. I feel like now we have quite, quite the great program. Fourth grade is right there. They, um, I, like Mr. Baldwin said, they're moving right into, I mean, it's like this nice flow now and they get it. They, you know, it's like the, the break is at the right place. Um, our curriculums flow much better. We have much better communication. Um, so I think they need to stay with the fifth and sixth grade.
Anybody else?
Uh, I have a, I guess it's a question. Um, if the fourth grade were to move to the, um, to the elementary building, would the seventh grade then move to MIS? Is that like what's being considered?
Yes.
Okay. My concern, and I'm not a seventh grade teacher. I teach sixth grade, Alyssa Eddie. Uh, but my concern for that would be, um, that the seventh grade would be losing access to things that they are currently used to, such as at the high school, they have a maker's space with, I believe, a 3D printer, um, and all these school things that maybe Mrs. Randall, the librarian, has put into place. As well as our current media center is not necessarily age-appropriate for seventh grade. Like, the books that we have are geared more towards elementary because the elementary sent us books when the buildings changed the way they were. Um, and their specials classes that the seventh grade has access to. They have eight sections per day and they would be losing the ability to do a lot of those programs that they're currently doing as well. So I think that would be something to consider as well and to bring seventh grade teachers in with this decision, so.
Does anybody see any problems with seventh grade being with the high school? Or do you have any students in seventh grade, kids?
I will never share.
I was, I was thinking of going to art field. I know it's different configuration, but there was, there were never issues. Then I was-
I'm sorry, could I ask you to step up the podium so we get your comments on the record?
Um, I was just saying that as a parent, I have a junior, or no, but she's senior. I have a senior and a freshman, but I would not see any issue. Now, I'm not going to speak for anybody else because I think it's different perspective. I think perspective matters to a lot of people. So I went to school down the road and seventh through twelfth grade was the norm. And, um, I, I mean, I never experienced it. I mean, you're always going to have potential for issues, but I would say that that would be a lot less risky or whatever in my mind than, um, moving fourth grade at that point, at the same point. I don't think that would be an issue, but that's because maybe largely from my own experience, so I don't know.
Um, I'm just going to ask a question to the whole group, just be a show of hands. We've been dealing with these kids walking back and forth for over a decade, seventh graders. According to Dr. Lippie's statement in the last meeting, that's a minimum of four times a day in all kinds of weather. I've personally witnessed them walking back and forth unsupervised. Is that a problem? I mean, I, 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 I'm not making a statement. I'm asking a question. Do you feel like that's a problem? Are we just, have we deviated from normal school security, uh, protocols long enough that now it's normalization and deviation? That we've deviated, it's become normal and ex- That we've deviated, it's become normal and accepted? You know, I guess I would ask the question this way. If you had to line up the seventh graders every time they had to go between buildings and having a teacher or administrator walk back in February, would it still be going on? And there's a lot, and I just wanna be real clear, there's a whole lot of other issues that here that the board has to look at besides this. But Mr. Shaw and I had a conversation with ten students about this very issue, about seventh graders being in the high school, and they're not in favor of it.
From, like, seventh graders being in the high school, like, high school students, is that what you're saying? Like, you talk to high school students?
We've talked to some high school students.
Right, asking for clarification. I do think it's a safety issue. As a parent, that concerned me way much more than, I mean, my own kids when they were going back and forth. It was three or four times a day, I'm not going to lie, and like you said, every single kind of weather. So, and largely, you know, I mean, teachers supervise what they can, but that is definitely a concern. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but that is more, that would be more of a concern to me than having them in the same building. But other people may have it differently.
Do it.
I would say, from the perspective of seventh graders going over to the high school, they're already there for several classes, so that's not gonna be a major shock to them to be over there. The not having to go back and forth across the parking lot would be a change for them, and that'd probably be a welcome change for many. I know, over the five years that I've been here, I've been housed in this building and go across the parking lot multiple times myself with my students every day. But I know that we supervise during passing periods. We supervise and provide shuttles during inclement weather. We provide all kinds of things. Now, whether students choose to accept the shuttles, choose to follow the rules and go during passing periods and those sorts of things, you know, those are, those are different issues in and of themselves. But as a school, we have worked to address the concerns with going across the hub for those seventh graders. We've also worked to work on the schedule issues to make them less times back and forth across as much as we possibly can. However, to provide the best education for every student, sometimes some students do go across more frequently because that is how they can get the best education that they need. So I think if you're looking at what students to move where, you really gotta look at where can you get the most bang for your buck on the services for the students? It's not a clear-cut answer anyway around, but I think that's where you gotta look.
I was just sharing questions that have been asked of me, so. Any other board members have anything you wanna say?
There was a couple people that raised their hand that have seventh graders currently. Did you guys have any comments or thoughts, the people that did raise their hands, if they have seventh graders currently?
We all have seventh graders coming up. They're in sixth.
I have a seventh grader. But you probably know that. Isn't the age-old question, why did the junior high building close to begin with?
Yeah, we just don't bring it up anymore, but yeah.
I mean, it is, it is kinda, you know, you circle the wagon, and you come back to conversations. And is, is the real conversation, to piggyback off of what has already been said, if there are safety concerns, is there not a space enough in this building for seventh and eighth grade? Or are you thinking, move seven to twelve in one building? I mean.
It's all potential, right now. I mean, we're basically having these discussions to get, you know, what you guys, you know, we've got in our minds, I mean, different things, like I told you, I was, you know, one of the things was the fourth graders or whatever, but the whole thing now is discussed. I can think of a couple, couple other jacks we can kind of throw on this, is what if we enclose between the buildings, and then they're not working, walking back and forth? That affects the high school plan.
And if we, if we're talking about safety, I mean, one of us paints some soccer lines on occasion, and one of us might see PE students walking around on their cell phones, maybe playing frisbee golf, but no supervision, or students, I think just recently, being able to wear coats in inclement weather, but because lockers are off key and they're lugging their boats back and forth, so I've got a very strong seventh grader. Not to mention, she's way taller than me, so I can't take her down, but. Nonetheless, I mean, safety is more than just walking in between two buildings. That's, that's my premise.
Any other board? Okay, I'm gonna get into a little something here. You know, these conversations are good information, but as a board, we don't have the whole plan put together. We got this less than a month ago. We weren't included in the strategic plan for the two, you know, it's, it's a board responsibility, setting the goals for the district and the strategic plan. And now we've got these pieces, but it's kinda like a giant puzzle, and we don't have all the pieces yet, so we can't start putting it together. How many people, just to show a hands, how many people have heard of Senate Bill 358? Okay, about half. They just approved that on April the thirteenth, and the law that it takes precedence over is the one that talks about charter schools buying thirty-day property. We shut a school building, which in the strategic plan, two years ago, we talked about downsizing the campus and getting kids, for safety reasons, education reasons, downsizing this thing. Now, you know, I asked for patience and grace at the last meeting because we have to sort through all this. The state's being challenged over, not Senate Bill 358, Mr. Franz, if I misspeak, you, you stop me, is being challenged in court, and most people believe that it's gonna go all the way to the state Supreme Court, which could take two to three years. So, there was a plan presented last year, rip twenty-seven teachers, close a building, save a million dollars. We'd have lost that building. So, this is one of the board responsibilities, is being fiscally responsible. And I know there's nobody sitting in this room that's willing to risk that building. And potentially, Dr. Grumow did a presentation at the last board meeting that showed the concentration of charter schools, Fort Wayne, South Bend, Lafayette, and they've saturated the areas, and they're looking to move out into the country. So, there's gonna be some, have to be some give and take, and some patience with the board. And as we move forward, like Mr. Hensley said, it looks like the MES plan is about the closest thing ready to fly. So as we move through this process, however we do it, whether we appoint a steering committee or however we do this, we have to keep in mind that we're not willing to give away for a dollar a building that the taxpayers of this community paid for. Now, yeah, we can save two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year in operating costs if we shut it, but the Senate Bill 358 says that if a building's under fifty percent, before I get to that part, if a building shuts for thirty days, it goes on a list that's monitored by the Attorney General, and the law specifically says that you can't modify, demolish. There was a school district in southern Indiana that was faced with this very thing. They shut a building, and then somebody wanted to put a charter school. So the board got together and tore the building down. There you go. You're not buying our building for a dollar. We're not gonna compete with you. So that's why the language, and I encourage y'all, go read Senate Bill 358, and don't forget to click on the two amendments at the bottom. Now, what we haven't been able to determine is if a building's under fifty percent, a charter school can come in and ask for space. We don't know where we sit with that, because Mr. Franz researched it today, and we can't seem to find the answer. We also think that they might have took it out, so until it gets there and these decisions are made, we still haven't brought in Baker Tilly. I asked Dr. Grumow to try and get Baker Tilly in bond re-bond management. We need to figure out exactly how much money we have fallen off of our debt service between now and 2026. We also need to bring in Darren Bates. The board had some training in an executive session, and we wanna bring him back, because I can tell you that the county's considering taking away your homestead property tax to build a jail, so your taxes are gonna go up. And Manchester Community Schools, in the city of Manchester, there's a percentage that's already reached the property tax cap, and anything we do could push that up. And what ends up happening when you get into that, and I'll wait for him to explain this in greater detail, but if we borrow a million dollars and we think we're getting X amount of dollars back per year, the closer more the community gets to the property tax caps, the less money we take in. So then, his prediction is, in four to six years, we're gonna be taking money out of our operating fund and paying debt service debt with it. Now, Dr. Grumow makes some pretty good points. There's grants, there's things that we can do on a small scale out of the operations fund. We got the COVID money coming. I'm just asking for patience, and, you know, don't be part of the rumor mill. We're looking at a whole lot of things, and we'll decide where we're gonna go as a board. We value the educational piece, but at the end of the day, if we give our facilities away, we don't have a place to provide an education. Board, you got anything you wanna add?
Well, it's not only charter schools, right? It's secondary, so your ID text and, and etc.
Yeah, thank you for that correction. Senate Bill 358 also opened it up to post-secondary education.
But if we look at the strategic plan, that's the thing, is to kind of look, you know, we're kind of building-driven, right on this thing, so look in building to building. How do we, you know, look at, it's kinda happened concurrently, is we gotta know what you guys really want, and what's the difference between what needs, this kind of thing, like, again, the more the, the more is better, the delighter. Kinda tune this down to really what, what you need to be, you know, what you want to be successful. Do this for each school. And I'd say, Tommy, like, if we're honest with each other, are you anywhere close to doing this with the, with the MIS or junior high?
Not even in the city.
Yeah, so you're not moving those kids in here anyway, right? In this building? I mean, maybe if you had to, if you were forced to.
Well, part of the concern is we don't know where we're going, so that's making it difficult.
Well, now, why we gotta have these conversations, right? Let's just put it on the table about what, what everybody's thinking of, why, and then work through it like we're kinda doing tonight. So if you look at this, the high school is a, is a, so we've kinda got the MIS in the, in this MAO building, you know, we're kinda in a little bit of crux with this, right? Determining, you know, what are we gonna do? There's other opportunities, though, perhaps potential opportunities where we're not giving up the building, you know? We build some partnerships with some strategic people on technical training, et cetera, et cetera. And then the high school, you know, I can think of a couple things that came up tonight that really can be impacted to what, you know, what we do with that plan, you know? So I think this is, you know, I kinda really, to be honest with you, I kinda liked how tonight went out, everybody, you know, again, we don't, there's enough conflict and crap in the world, and I don't, I don't need it in my life, and I definitely don't need it, you know, on the board, administrators, and teachers, and community members. So I think this is the way we need to roll with this thing, is just have open conversations. You know, I don't know, Randy, if you could kinda tally up what that is, but I think if we can do this with each school, we get a target, now we can, now we can educationally, or, you know, smartly look at the money flow, and how we do that, do we, do we go get a bunch of it over a long term, like they've done in the past? Do we phase these buildings over, you know, three to five-year plans? I mean, there's a lot of options out here, but it really starts with the intelligent conversation. I mean, I don't, you know, again, you know, kinda dates it, just not a lot of involvement in this, so I def, you know, there's definitely questions, you know, to work out and just like the fourth grade move. Nobody's made any decisions about any of that. It's just, you know, we're trying to talk through things and say, what potential possibilities to do here, you know? But at some point, we have talked about this enough, right? At some point, we gotta get to the list, figure out what we're gonna do, put a plan together and execute, and add more things. In no other way, there's, you know, it's all for naught, so that's my two cents.
Yeah, and as I told the board today in an email, my, my seventh of assent, look, we certainly don't want to move anybody because we think they would be better served at one school over the other. We, we're only looking at this because we think we have to, and we haven't made any And we'll know more as we look into 358 further, and, you know, it's the last thing that we, we wanna do. We, we don't wanna drive a wedge into this community, but we're not willing to, as a board, sacrifice an asset that this community has bought and paid for. It's just not something that I think anybody on this board's willing to do. And again, we haven't made that decision, but we knew that, we knew that it was getting around, so I made the suggestion to Dave that it needed to be discussed. Secondly, appreciate all the effort that you guys have put into, to your plans. It means a lot, and we've certainly not made decisions on, oh, we're not gonna do this, or we're not gonna do that. I thi, I think pretty much anything's on the table, as long as we feel like we can get it paid for in a fiscally responsible way, so.
And I would just add to that, you know, talking about doing it in phases, once we find out from the bond companies, and we make the public aware of what it's gonna do to our tax base in our community, maybe we do the security pieces first and do part of MES, and find, I'm just gonna throw a number out, finance five million for five years, get it paid off, see what the future looks like, then maybe Phase Two is eight or nine million for six or seven years. And I'm just throwing an idea out here for conversation. So in the future, twenty years from now, when the board's sitting here, they don't have to wait twenty years to levy some debt service money, or they don't have to go raise taxes to fix a roof like we did, but that, that money will be staggered in that strategic plan, or in the debt service, I'm sorry, I misspoke, in the debt service. So we have this falling off here, we have this falling off here, so every five, six, or seven years, the board's not sitting here handcuffed going, well, hey, we really need a new football field, but we can't afford it unless we wanna raise taxes, so the kids, the kids lose out because we, we feel like we can't raise taxes. So, like you said, there's no, no option really off the table, you know? Let's throw this one out. Maybe in two years, we don't know how this case is gonna come out, maybe the state wins, maybe, maybe the taxpayers win, but however it comes out, if we still wanna consolidate the campus, maybe we add onto this building and make a four, five, six, seven building. I don't know, but it's conversation. What we need to do right now is figure out what the next steps are, and in the timeline, in May, we wanna get the bond company in here and find out exactly how much money's falling off in, in the next, between now and 2026, what's available, and then we'll figure out what we wanna spend and for how long, and we need to get Darren Bates in here, because I think that's critical. The rest of the board thinks it's critical.
That's the tone of the night.
That I've spoken to, that the public understands what's gonna happen, depending on how much money we spend, because is, you know, if you look around, we got the property tax caps and assessments are climbing. So if you're paying eighty-nine cents per hundred, and they raise your assessment ten thousand, your taxes went up regardless of what we did. And then when these, and I don't mean to repeat myself, Darren Bates can do this better than I can. When we hit that tax cap, I'll just give you an example that you can go verify. Wabash City Schools, right now, because eighty, ninety-eight percent, unless it's a new building, ninety-eight percent of their community is at their property tax cap. So every year, when they get their money from the state, five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars comes right out of operating to go pay their debt service. I don't think we wanna get there. Lord? We're a little over two hours. Anybody else?
I do have to say, thank everybody for coming tonight to listen to that key fob presentation, because that guy did.
Hey, Ms. Corrus, how's, how's kindergarten enrollment with the dual-language thing? How's it going?
Good. Doing another dual-language marketing going out this week, so, yeah.
Mr. Franz, do you have anything to add on Senate Bill 358?
I don't mean to put you out in the spot, but I wanna give you a.
I think you can assume that that fifty percent probably is out there. I just don't think what mine is exactly.
They took out what I presented, but it's not in the final version, it's just sent to the other.
Okay. Anybody else?
Sorry for the show. I gotta do better about evening throughout the day.
Uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you everybody for coming. Sorry we went over.